Magic button.
Good to go.
You're not expecting me to read that, do you?
Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're in the afternoon session of September 7th. The first item on our agenda is an action item. This is Resolution 21-18, recovering forgone amount of $1,232,890. At this time, I will turn it over to our esteemed clerk.
Commissioners, good afternoon. I appreciate the opportunity to present the resolution. I kind of struggled with which resolution to present to the commissioners first, adopting of the budget, or the resolution to recover the forgone. And we came up with what we should probably do first, or submit to the commissioners first, is Resolution Number 2021-18, which is the resolution to recover the forgone amount. That we did, in fact, meet all of the publishing requirements. We conducted our public hearing at the same time that the budget hearing was done. Unfortunately, we did not hear from any members of the general public. I still have not heard from any members of the general public. I don't know if the commissioners heard from anyone from the general public, but I want to assure the commissioners, we did, in fact, meet the requirements, and that has been done. So at this point in time, I am presenting to the commissioners of Valley County, the Resolution 2021-18, and would recommend that the commissioners adopt this resolution.
And I think, Doug, you did it in the right order, because we couldn't do the budget without the forgone in it.
Kind of what we thought, yeah.
I will tell you that the Road Advisory Board did make a recommendation to the commissioners. They haven't officially done that, but to take forgone, so that we could help with the stabilizing funding for the Road Department.
Where did you guys come up with the 700 and some odd thousand for that?
So what we did is, we analyzed the base amount. I can give you a brief overview. So the base amount that the commissioners can levy for is approximately $7,500,000, right? That's not taking any new construction, or any 3%, right? So $7,500,000 is what is going to be budgeted for to fund the existing budgets, okay? This additional money that we are bringing in, or that we are recommending, would fund the new positions, and then a portion of it would go to the Road Department this first fiscal year. The commissioners can change that in fiscal year 2023, when we're preparing the budget, but for fiscal year 2022, $7,500,000 that the commissioners are going to be levying for is going to fund, general fund, into, you know, all of those other funds, okay? And then the additional forgone amount is going to be able to fund the new positions that are created, and then the Road Department.
So you basically figured out what you were short, took that out of forgone, and what was left was for the Road Department.
Yes, got you. Sorry.
Makes sense.
You presented that much better than I did, and I do apologize.
All right. Any more questions for Doug?
And I think also the Road Department, I mean, it's almost what we got in SRS funding last year, so we're just short of where that SRS was, since we haven't been appropriated that yet this year.
So the Road Department budget, I don't remember, was a little over $3 million now?
No, the Road Department's gone significantly up. Gabby, do you mind pulling up something that we can see a little bit better?
Do you want that same form, but bigger?
I can walk up there and look, I guess. I thought it was 3.1 main or 3.2 main. There it is.
And that's when?
Road Bridge.
That's just to keep the lights on.
3.220.
No, the budget's gonna be $6 million.
Well, that's with your cash carryover. I'm just saying for next year's revenue, I should say.
So that $6 million includes all the projects that we have proposed. But just to keep the lights on, pay salary benefits, is about 3.2.
Basically, that's.
Any more questions? If not, I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 21-18. Any questions in the audience?
I move that we approve Resolution 2021-18, recovering our forgone amount.
Moved and seconded. Last call. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next agenda item is also an action item. This is Resolution 21-19, to approve the fiscal year 22 budget. Go ahead, Doug.
Commissioners, thank you again. The budget, what we're... This resolution will fix the budget at $33,735,712.32, which is not greater than the amount of the tentative budget to be raised from property taxes that was advertised. To make sure that this is what was advertised. Gabby, if you can scroll all the way to the bottom. There it is. And that figure should match. And if you just want to double check, $33,735,712.32. And 32 cents. So that is, in fact, what we published. The amount that we are going to be levying, including the forgone, is $8,705,453. Gabby, do you mind pulling up the L2 worksheet? With forgone? And if you go to the tab number two, then scroll to the bottom. I just want to show the commissioners that we're not levying more than what we're allowed to. So this is the L2 worksheet that shows the maximum amount that Valley County can levy for. That does include the forgone of $1,232,890. So the amount to be levied is $8,705,453. And this is captured in Resolution Number 21-19.
Doug, when we don't take our new construction, we don't get that the next year, right? But it still goes on the books. I mean, it's still taxed.
No. We're not levying 3% or new percentage.
So if next year, if we have zero new construction, we get zero. We can't come back and take?
We can't come back and take this, no. And that's because the Valley County is moving to, well, we have done a resolution to recover.
But that adds to your total value of your county, right?
It still adds to the value, yeah.
Eventually, the next year, you'll end up taxing.
Yes. You would, correct.
Gabby, can you go and give me the levy rate?
So we haven't plugged it in yet?
Yeah, I've got it, yeah.
We just got the final, final value from the State Tax Commission today. I don't think it moved much, but if you want to see what the levy rate's going to be with the official value, give me a half a second. I can tell you that.
Actually, I'm more interested in how we compare with the state. And last year, June got me that information. And I think it took a while. It takes a while for the state to put all those together, but I'm really interested to see what that comes in as far as other counties. But it was lower than last year.
Where are levy rates?
Our prelim... Sorry, our preliminary that we had was approximately $10 less than what it was last year.
Our actual levy itself is going down. I think last year, we were, I think we were number six in the state.
Six or four.
I think we were six, and I can pull that up.
Oh, it's okay. It's not a big deal. I know for quite a few years, we were the second lowest, and that was one of my goals, was to get the lowest just once. Let's see.
We'll never do that against Blaine County?
Probably not, because they don't have that much services.
Hootney County is also, you know, blown up with their values up there, so.
Hey, any more questions for Doug?
None for me.
Not, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 21-19.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 21-19 for the fiscal year 22 budget.
Moved and seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And at this time, I'm going to recess as the Valley County Board of Commissioners, and reconvene as the EMS board. And we were going to talk about the EMS 22 budget. Go ahead, Doug, whenever you're ready.
Commissioners, thank you. The resolution before you is Resolution 21-20, and that is setting the budget for the Valley County EMS district. The contracts for the fire departments would be $1,180,138.98, split three ways between Cascade, Donley, and McCall. We do have budgeted training, equipment, supplies, and other expenditures as necessary in the amount of $28,000, with the total budget for the Valley County EMS district of $1,208,138.98. Gabby, do you mind going to the publication of the Valley County EMS budget? And if you can see, Commissioners, this is, in fact, what we published in the Star News. And it gives more of a breakdown of what each fire district would receive, but you can see the amount that is being submitted to the commissioners on this resolution is the same amount that was published in the Star News. So again, to phrase what I did, rephrase what I stated the last time, we did meet all of the publishing requirements. The commissioners did, in fact, have a public hearing. And again, we are, I am recommending to the commissioners to approve Resolution 21-20.
Pretty interesting, because it wasn't too many years back that they were working on, what, $250,000 a year each?
Correct.
Yeah, that's almost $400,000.
Way too low.
No way too low. What we really need. Any more questions for Doug? Not, I'd entertain a motion for 21-20.
I move that we approve the Valley County EMS Board Resolution 21-20 for fiscal 2022 budget.
Moved and seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, at this time, we will end the EMS budget committee, or commission, and reconvene as Valley County Commissioners. I can't walk and sign at the same time.
I'm just trying not to cough.
Good job, Doug. Everything looks good. Thanks for all your help this year.
Thanks to everyone, thank you.
Makes it so much easier when you guys do all the hard work.
I feel like we need fireworks or something. We've been meeting for so long to talk about this. It needs to be a celebration of something.
How about a barbecue? Maybe we should have a barbecue tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Okay, our next agenda item, these are all action items. The first one is approval of the FY22 range chart. Where was that? Was that in our packet, Gabby? Do you know?
It's part of the salary, the proposed salary spreadsheet. It's one of the tabs.
While you're looking.
Yeah.
Any tall people around here? While you're looking, I thought I'd just do an overview of why we, how it came, how we came up with those ranges. So I, it was time to just go out and do a salary survey as best I could for, you know, all the positions. It's impossible to find salaries on all the positions, but I got a good cross-section. And primarily, I did most counties, so it was Bonner, Boundary, Kasha, Elmore, Franklin, Jerome, Madison, Ness, Pierce, Payette, Blaine, Cootney, a couple from Ada, but Ada doesn't really, they're always so high. Bannock, Abingham, Jim, Jefferson, Twin Falls County. And then, once in a while, somebody would send out a request for salaries or whatever in my HR group for counties and cities, so I'd grab some salaries out there. So I have some miscellaneous things. The bottom line is, is that that's how we came up with the ranges that we have. Also, knowing that with a Democratic president, it's only a matter of time before the minimum wage goes to 15. So we were really close to having the lowest paid position at 15 anyway. So everybody's moved up to 15. I mean, not everybody, but the lowest wage is no less than 15. And so because of that, that also means that I have to move the whole scale up so that we don't have our higher people being paid at a percentage that it compresses them down, and it doesn't allow for growth. So we did have to do that. So that's how these pay ranges came up.
I don't agree with you on the $15, because it's a president. I'd really like to keep this as far as local. I think it's important that we pay our employees to be able to live in Valley County a wage that is, allows them to have a sustainable income. And I don't want to take it to national politics at all, because I would totally disagree with that comment from you, Pat. So let's keep it local.
Sounds fair. I just know it's coming. Well, and that did go into it. So when I was talking about the Blaine and the Cootney Counties, which tend to pay higher anyway, we're not too far behind them. So unless their wage was way out of whack, as far as it was so high that it would cause, or cause an inflated wage for that position, you know, they stayed in there, but we really have to think of ourselves as some of those higher paid. We are recreational. Our housing has gone through the roof, and we really need to take care of our employees, so.
That was my question for you two, is in your equation, is the cost of living in both, in each one of those areas accounted for in this? Or are you just looking at wages only?
I'm just looking at wages only. And I looked at the size of the county. So some of these that I listed off, I was looking at, are how are they in relation to our size? Meaning, the income that comes in as far as their taxable base, and then how many people they have. And then I also thought about, okay, you know, this one may be a little less, but the idea is that the high Blaine and Cootney Counties will kind of offset some of those lower. Some of them, the ones that were totally out of whack, I had to drop them out, because it just messed with it. So either on the lower side or the high side, they were so over the top that it was messing with our pay ranges, and making sure that we were staying equitable from the lower to the higher type wages, so. I also tried to change the structure. The kinds and levels is difficult, because you're always trying to go from, okay, I have this level, and I have to go down and find that salary level. So I changed the structure a little bit, and that was just to make it easy. I can find the assessor's office and figure out what their positions are. I also, when I was doing this with SORT, to make sure that it kept the integrity of what the kinds and levels did, meaning that if they are, that administrative position was at a level five, they're still kind of at that, they're at that level five as far as the pay goes. It's just that they're not showing. It's hard to explain. So as an example, we might have a clerical position, like a DMV, or a driver's license, or, I'm trying to think of another one, but on the kinds and levels, they were level five. So now they're starting at $15.17, those people that were at level five. So that's where they fit within the point factor analysis and the way they were before. So I did keep that integrity in place. No questions?
Pat, can you remind me, what are we paying the three-year groomers? Is it 19?
Well, so the groomers changed now, because what, what I didn't... It seemed like when we had a seasonal pay scale, and then we had our pay scale, that we were paying so low on the seasonal side, that it was hard to get people. So in visiting with my seasonal managers, it made more sense to put those people, fold them in here. So I can't remember exactly what snow groomers were. I think they were like 15, 16, 17.
And then we changed it to 16, 17, and 18.
18, yeah. Now they're the same as a road tech, because they are operating equipment, just as a road tech does. They're also doing some manual labor as well. So they fit more in with what a road tech does.
So then, that's the beginning salary for a groomer now, is 2018?
Probably.
Oh, wait a minute. Gosh, my eyes are just going out.
It's 2043.
Groomers are on 15, 16, and 17 is the current.
15, 16, 17, we're current now.
Is what we currently have them in.
So there, that's a pretty good jump, when I was looking at, I like the weed guys. No license, they start at 16, go to 17.
Yeah, so the weed guys, they also kind of got folded in here. And he was, Steve was having a hard time getting people, right? So if they don't have a license, they start at 16, and then once they're licensed, they go to 17, and then they move up the scale as if any, as they would if they were a regular full-time employee. So when, so like...
A beginning employee's gonna make 31.5.
A 16, if they are not licensed?
No, that's a 15, 17. And then we gotta throw Percy and all that stuff on there.
No, they're not getting.
No, we don't. Percy doesn't.
Well, they do that, not for seasons, right?
However, what we did with the weed department is, we have two employees now that work 50% of the time in weed, and 50% of the time in the Road Department. So they're paid at Road Department wages.
Only questions I have, so under the tab, that's the 2022 ranges. It has new minimum, and then market low, market, market high, and maximum.
Right.
So the market low, that is what the other counties are paying for this same position.
The start?
Yeah. And we are underneath of it on every single one. So I guess what I'm looking at is, in the future, are you showing us that our new minimum is still under the market rate?
No, that market rate is deceiving. So I hear what you're saying there.
Did you look at market low on the very first?
Yeah, yeah, that whole thing is deceiving. That, that, the new minimum, the market low, market, market high, maximum, that is the pay ranges that we inherited from BDPA, who did our survey previously. So it doesn't mean that we are paying below the market, and I don't know why they put it that way, and we could certainly change those titles to make it more reasonable.
I'm concerned that if we have an employee that looks at all this.
Yep.
You know, they're looking at that going, wait a minute, I'm still $2 under what the market low is.
Yep.
And I think that that could create future issues for us, and...
I'm surprised it hasn't yet. You know, that, again, I was trying to make this easy for everybody, but I, there's nothing wrong with changing those titles. It can be medium, it can be minimum, and then I can put something up there, and then the average, and then we can do high, and then maximum. So, minimum, low, or something, or, yeah, I don't know. I'll change those titles. I can fiddle with those.
Or new, or I, you know, there's gotta be something in that, because that raised real concerns for me, because planning for the future tells me that we're already way behind, you know, what...
And we're not. It's just that...
They don't feel like we are, but...
No, the title is, the titles are not, are weird, so, yeah.
Same thing in the sheriff ranges. I looked at the same thing there. I was going, are you...
Yeah, we definitely can change those. I was trying to keep it somewhat consistent, where we were making these other changes, not to confuse people, but they're just titles. We can, I'll fix them.
Those confuse me.
Yeah, and that's fine.
So we need to approve this range.
I'll make a motion that we approve the fiscal year 22 range chart.
Second up.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Going to move on now to the sheriff's ranges.
Same thing with the sheriff. Went through and made sure that they were actually paying well, right in the average with everybody else, so there weren't a lot of changes with that. In fact, in some cases, we were a bit higher. Not enough to really say, oh my gosh, you know, we've got a problem here. So we were just a bit higher than what the salary survey said. So dispatch was lower. What was that?
When was the salary survey done?
Right at the beginning of budget process.
This year? Oh, got it, okay.
My salary survey, the one before that was done in 17.
So 17? Really that long ago?
And I've been watching the wages as, you know, as we've gone along, so, and correcting and fixing and putting people where they should be, and it's been an ongoing process. When Gabby gets to the wages, one of the things that we did do this year is, it seemed like we, every once in a while, somebody'd come along and say, why am I being paid at this level? I've been here for so many years. And we'd start to look at it and think, okay, we gotta fix this with the budget, because they, they really aren't where they should be within the ranges. And so this year, Gabby and I looked at all of the people, and made sure that we didn't have anybody else that was gonna come and tell us, you know, why, ask us, why am I being paid here? So we did a lot of correcting on that part as well. Dispatch was low. Those folks did go up as they needed to. But patrol, and detention, and our command staff are pretty close to where they should be.
So a beginning dispatch is $19?
For somebody, the recruit, well, actually, no. Dispatch, that's the corporals at 19. So a recruit, which is somebody that hasn't been certified yet, they're at 17. Oh, I thought that was 18.
It is 18 on mine.
Yeah, this, I didn't update this thing. So, yeah. So, yeah, we brought them in at 18, and then the, once they're certified, they go to 19. Yeah. Unless they've received, so there's a caveat there. If they've received a raise, so let's say that they're a recruit, and they became a recruit like in, I don't know, in July, then they might get like a 3% raise, and so then we do make sure that they're a minimum of 6% above whatever their wage is now.
And on your scale that you've, we have here online, you don't have it on the screen there, there's a column called PFA.
Point factor analysis?
Well, that's what that is. So those numbers are a variation of the point factor analysis?
That is the point factor analysis for that position.
Okay. Some of them have two different numbers on them. I'm just trying to figure it out.
I don't know what you're looking at.
Under the PFA, you have like a 663 slash 724.
Wow, that's leftover from years ago, from last year.
So if, is that in your packet?
Yeah. I just wondered what they were.
Well, because, yeah, we were, a job description had changed on some of those last year. And so that increased, that changed the PFA. So the first number was probably old one, and the second one's probably a new one. That's what I'm thinking happened, if I remember right. But that's leftover from last year. We've got them all settled in now.
I love the really long, $26.566020.59.
Oh, you didn't round it up.
That's gonna be tough.
You can change that in Excel, so it's only two decimal points. So that was so confusing.
So what I'm hearing you say, Pat, holistically, we've increased salaries now to where we, people should be within the correct range for the positions that they're being paid.
Correct.
In future, we shouldn't have to have these 6% or 9% salary bumps to bring us back into the market range, unless the market shifts appreciably, and we have to continue to keep up with it.
Exactly. And that's why you do the full-blown survey like I did this year, because, you know, we had been tweaking a little bit here and there, and watching the market. So the, the one thing I would say that's really important from you all is that the year that we did the 6% increase, we didn't address the ranges. I mean, we didn't address the people. So we had people that were stuck at the minimum, or even though they got a 6% raise, they were still being paid as the same as somebody that started.
Starting brand new.
Right, mm-hmm, brand new. So we have to be really careful about doing that. The administrative pay policy... Um, the administrative pay policies does indicate that when you give a raise, half of that raise moves the ranges up, and the other half is for the employee raise, so that, well, everybody moves up within the ranges. So it just caution you to be careful about doing that again, cuz it really did cause some problems.
Pat, do we still have the policy that once you're maxed out, you're at that salary?
You're spinning, unless-
Everybody gets a raise.
Yep, you're spinning, uh, you stay at that maximum, so if somebody's at the maximum, um, they stay there unless the range moves up. So in the case of a 3%, uh, we move the range up 1.5% and then as long as you have room within the pay ranges, you would go up 1.5%. If you're at that very end, you only get a 1.5% raise, because that's what the ranges did.
Are we getting close to bumping any people at the, the max? I think we're a ways away, aren't we?
Yep, we are.
Hey Sheriff, do you want to add anything? You're good with this? Be honest, be just, and fear not. You don't have this? So do you want us to wait while you look at it?
That's really an HR function though, isn't it? I mean, am I missing that? No, you approve all of your own pay scales. HR doesn't do that for the sheriff's department?
The world is rammed by those who show up.
Commissioner Muffin, I, I, this is an HR function, that, because what was happening previously is, yeah, we would have, prior to this, we would have elected officials, department heads, just come and say, this is what this person should be paid based on this. So we did transition to having it an HR function, doing the point factor analysis. So yes, in my humble opinion, those responsibilities, that research was in fact conducted by our human resources director when we hired a full-time HR director. Uh, so to, to answer your question, in my humble opinion, it is an HR function.
Okay.
Now, again, we're, we're not all going to agree. I, I mean, I, I'm gonna stand up here and tell you that I don't think my chief deputy's paid enough, right? I, I think all of us would potentially have someone within our office that we could come in, but we, we wanted to get away from that, right? We wanted to have a fair, equitable way to, uh, present to the commissioners, cuz ultimately the commissioners approved the budgets, the salaries, a way that they could analyze the research that was con- conducted by the HR director and come up with an equitable way to do it. Is it as fair as it can be? I, I'm gonna stand up here and say yes. Um, am I gonna stand up here and also say, do I agree with all of the positions? Absolutely not. Um, you know, it, but it-
I could just see, I could see each elected official coming up and saying, this is what I want.
Yep.
And so-
And that was happening.
Unless it's controlled in some way differently.
But we, we kind of, we've gone away from that. Um, this is the, the way that, it has been done, and I think we all, we all agreed that this is the way that it was going to be done, even if we didn't agree with some of the outcomes. But this was, again, I, I've said it probably three times now, the most equitable way, the most, um, fair way that we can have our HR director analyze these on a regular basis, and present the, to the commissioners for consideration. Thank you.
And I would, I said we haven't always agreed, but what I'm saying is, I haven't seen this final one, so that's probably not. Yes, but, I'll see.
Well, it's been a long time since we've had any EAFs, hasn't it, Pat?
Yeah, because we did that at the beginning, I, I stay on top of the PAF form. So if it's any position, I'll put it through the PAF and make sure that helps me as I'm putting, figuring out where they need to be in the range itself. Um, now I'll listen, Doug comes to me and says, I think they should be blah, blah, blah. I'll listen to him and I'll go check out in the market and say, nope, they're where they should be. So I'll listen and, and I'll double-check, but-
Can you fight on our behalf, or? Oh, wait, we're supposed to do that?
If I could, I would.
What I like about this whole system though is that each employee's gonna know where they're gonna be.
Yeah.
Every year, we didn't have, we didn't have that in the past, and it was just kind of jumped around. And now everybody knows where they fit in the whole system.
Well, they kind of know, it's the, it's the right to left that confuses them, but I, again, how do we, we could put steps in again, but the steps mean nothing based on the way we're doing this.
I think this makes us a team.
It does make us a team.
We are a Valley County team, we are not subsets or subdivisions within that.
And I, I just didn't care for the steps, so, um, this gives us flexibility in a little, you know, in certain ways, because, um, with the step, if, you know, we, we have to move somebody from one step to another, this gives us flexibility, gives you flexibility on how you're going to, um, decide on what the wages are gonna be, or the raises are gonna be, so it really is a little more flexible. I'll change the titles, that will help some, uh, with that, so.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the sheriff ranges chart.
Move that we approve the FY 2020 sheriff ranges chart.
I'll second that.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, whatever it takes.
Say twenty-three, oops.
Who just second all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, now let's go to the new gem plan percentages, those are also, I believe, in our-
They are, so what-
It's totally confused me.
What I heard during the budget process was, was that, um, it was time to change the dependent insurance rates where the employees face, the employee pays 50% and the county pays 50% for dependent coverage. That's what I heard. So created a spreadsheet, um, that shows what the new rates will be. Once you all approve those, one of the first things I'll do when I get back to my desk is let the employees know that beginning in October, this is what your dependent rate will be. So that they won't, so they'll know.
And also make sure that we highlight to start with that you've gotten this much of a raise, we've adjusted all of your-
Yeah.
-salary ranges, this is how we're helping to offset some of those costs.
So one of the things that I do wanna do as soon as Gabby gets the information in, um, in October, entered into the payroll system, um, and I, I know I can pull down her report, then I will do a, um, total compensation statement. So that total compensation statement shows what they're making, what the county is contributing on their behalf, and what the bottom line is, so that will help. For now, I just want people to see the raises, and I'll let them know that a comp statement will be coming in October. But, um, that gives us, gives them an idea and a heads up that this is coming. But because Gabby, we'll get to this, but because, um, we did, made some corrections, I can't say that everybody's gonna get the same raise, it's gonna be different based on what the corrections were. So, um, I think that, that's the reason the comp statement is really critical.
Pat, I'm a little confused, let's go to employee and spouse. $1,429, wouldn't half of that be?
No, because you pay for the employees, so it's the, um,
Oh, oh, oh.
You take out the employee portion.
Right.
Yeah, and then it's 50% after the employee portion.
Seven twenty-five off.
Off of the fourth.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Yep, yep.
Had to call Gabby. Kind of forever going, what?
That's not half, that doesn't make sense, now it does. Hey, I would entertain a motion to approve the new gem plan percentages. And thanks, Pat, we took a while to get here, but we did.
That's, that's all right.
I'll make motion to approve the new gem plan percentages for 2020.
Okay.
Who just second any more discussion? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And the next one is also an action item, approval of creation of the new positions for FY 22. Uh, do we have those?
Yeah, Gabby's got them here somewhere.
They are listed too, um, if you need.
There are, um, two action items here, one is for moving some positions to, um, from part-time to full-time. And then, um, the other one, of course, is for the new. So the deputy prosecuting attorney is a new position, the legal assistant is, um, that one is where, um, they had a legal receptionist, and she was two levels below what a legalist, I think it was two or three levels, below a legal assistant. And so they're just adding, their, the position actually is a higher position, and so that's the difference. Does that make sense? So it's a higher level position, should be paid higher, they're just asking for that to be in the budget. And the assistant planner, the, um, the appraiser, the office support specialist for the road department, this will be the person that will help with the, um, with the help with the inventory program, help, um, with answering the phones and answering questions, and just be an overall helper at the road department. But their primary responsibility will be getting that inventory control up and running.
So is that the official title that you came up with, was office support specialist?
Yeah, that's what Jeff and I talked about. I didn't want to, um, limit it to just inventory, I wanted them to know that their position was office support. They're gonna be helping, um, in more than just that. And the sheriff's office, the patrol sergeant, uh, waterways, or recreation sergeant, I don't know what they're gonna call that. And the civil, so the top two, patrol sergeant and waterway sergeant, those are just converting what are now corporal, the waterways is moving the corporal into a sergeant, the patrol sergeant is moving a patrol into a sergeant, a patrol deputy. And those are the maximum on the patrol deputy that it could be.
And the civil clerk went full-time.
The civil clerk went full-time, yep. Right, and then on recreation, um, the assistant, which we're working on changing that title a bit, uh, will go to a full-time position from part-time, the natural resources and land, whatever that position's gonna be, it's a placeholder. We're still working on that job description, but we wanted to have the position in there. If we decide not to hire that, well, we have money there if we need it, so.
So Pat, the assistant recreation going to full-time, that's not even $16 an hour, is it?
Uh, he is, uh, that one changed, I'm not sure where we're at, because that went all over the place. But-
He was what, 29 hours?
Yes, he was at 29 hours.
I don't know if that's-
Um, so, I don't know what his title, I think we decided his recre- it would be recreation coordinator for his title.
He's at 21.28?
That would be what he would start at, yes. But he will be higher than that, because he's already been in doing that position, so.
Okay.
And that, that'll come out when Gabby looks at the, uh, wages. Well, that's what we have.
That 27.6 should be higher.
The what?
Well, that's just in addition to what-
That's in addition to what they're being paid now.
Okay, thirty-eight. Okay, they were all right there, I thought that was the final one.
Mm-hmm. No, that's just an additional. So that would be on top of what they're normal.
Which they're already making, okay.
Exactly.
Hey, everybody good with that? I need a motion to approve the creation of those new positions.
I'm moved to approve the creation of new positions for FY 2022. You want also to include in that the next one, or you want them separate?
No, I think they could go together.
Yeah, put them together.
And to put two of the positions to full-time and convert two positions.
Who just second all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And the last one is approve the county employee salary increases.
And that's Gabby.
And that's Gabby.
Sorry.
Okay.
I captured that.
All right.
So like Pat said, we, she did the survey of the chem- of the, um, employees and determined who was in the wrong part of their wage, and determined with the new ranges where everybody should be. So we've presented this, uh, spreadsheet to you guys for the last couple of months. Um, so you have the green column where the employee currently is, and then the purple column is where Pat says they should be in the new ranges with any fixes that needed to take place. And then we did the 3% on top of that, which gives you the orange column, which is the rate that we say they should go to on October 1st. I did PAFs for every employee in the county, and I would ask that you guys do a motion to approve the signing of the PAFs, and then I will enter them into payroll October 1st.
So Gabby, Gabby, somewhere on there is a total for all the, is that the 162? Or is that the 122?
So at, at the very bottom.
At the very bottom.
If Doug will scroll, this tab is, doesn't have the road department, they're in a separate ones, but-
Whoa. Sorry. Okay, just don't look.
So then-
Oh, $64,000 is all?
Yeah, so that's, that's for the weed department, so the 9.35. That's the total.
Well, that's to get to everybody where they should be on the salary schedule.
And the 3%, yes. Including benefits and everything as well, too.
I'm just thinking about 23 and 24.
It doesn't, that doesn't factor in.
You're learning 3% of the new full-time amount.
It's gem plans.
You get 3% off.
We got lots of new construction.
But this year, the way we're looking at, next year we're gonna be fine. That's what I've been calling it.
Commissioners, I, I mean, if you're concerned how you're gonna fund these in future years, we're gonna have to analyze that. Uh, one of the, the ways that potentially we, we could utilize PILT, right? Uh, we, we can take a look at how the commissioners are utilizing PILT. Um, so that would be a revenue resource to assist with these, uh, these ongoing costs for future years. But really, it's just gonna come down to budgeting year after year, right? Just to see what can be done.
Gabby, are the elected officials on there too?
Yes, they are.
Doug, can you go back and see what kind of raise we got as commissioners?
You guys all got 3%.
3%.
All elected officials were put in for 3%.
$1,500 a year.
And that also, you guys talked about a few weeks ago, that the change in the dependent on the gem plan is gonna make up some of that money as well. That'll save us quite a bit.
And I think a lot of this is growth within the county. You know, we've got to have new positions when the county is growing.
Well, it's really been kind of neat, because I'm getting comments from other private businesses and hospitals up here about now we have to keep up with the county, or never used to be that way before. We were losing people, so, and nice to be on the other side of the fence. I would entertain a motion to approve the new employee salary increases.
I'll make motion that we approve the county employee salary increases for fiscal year 22.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thanks Gabby.
Yep, so what we've done in the years past is I've just given elected officials, department heads theirs, and then the commissioners just signed to the elected officials. So if that works for you, I will do that.
Works for me.
Get a quick break before we move on.
Yep, we can take a quick break, and then we'll come back and talk about the barbecue. Do we all sign or just me?
Just, uh, we usually just divide it up. But I'm gonna make sure you go to get your own. I'll make sure that- I'm talking, is that what you said?
Commissioner Muffin's the one that wanted it on the agenda.
It's fine, I can do it.
I can do it fine either.
I just want to make sure they know what to answer when you ask questions.
Well, that's why you wanted me, because I can do it.
There you go.
I can start it and you can support me.
Just a reaffirmation of what it all means. How we're going to roll it out.
Yeah, this is really a great start.
Awesome.
Just did a webinar branding, and then I have a white page on the web, on the importance of doing that for recruiting.
Is that a big one?
Mm-hmm.
This one, oh. This one, not so much. Jeremy's new position, since it's vacant right now, so filling it, that's what I'm asking, I guess, is are you going to wait until October first? Are you posting that one, or?
Yes, I talked to him about it.
Oh, no? Okay. He said he was ready to go on, so hopefully.
Well, that's what he said, but he has to come see me.
We didn't have any indigent.
I will remind him of that.
I mean, I'll, you know, I'm going to help. I'll be happy to, but I, he has to come and talk to me when he wants to. It may not be the same. Structure is part. It just means we have to spend some time together.
Hey, we're going to move on down to our agenda item. Our next item is not an action item, this is a discussion on the Star Kickoff Barbecue. This from the social committee?
No, it's just strategic committee.
Strategic committee, can you say that three times in a row?
No, I can hardly say it once.
Come on, give it a shot.
Okay, no. As I used to tell Kyle, how, so what part of no don't you understand? Anyway, I digress. Um, tomorrow we're doing the, um, the rollout of the STAR, our guiding principles, service, transparency, accountable, and responsive. And we have invited all of the employees to a barbecue back over here. So what we need your help with is to, um, we've explained to them that they can sit down with the commissioners, and the commissioners will help them understand how we live STAR and what it means. So that is where we need your help. So, um, I can, if you have time to look at it tonight, the strategic committee did come up with a little cheat sheet of what service means, transparent, accountable, and responsive mean, and I can send that out to you all. Um, and then you will have that as, as a little cheat sheet. I'll print some off and bring them, so you'll have them tomorrow as well. But we really need you to help us support the strategic guiding principles because that really is what's holding us together as one county. Um, yeah, and, and it's important to maintain the integrity of the culture as well, which we need to do, so. Hey, Gabby and Terry, do you want to add?
Just about the, the STAR of the month thing.
Are we ready to do that?
We're just going to explain it to them so that, we're not ready to roll out, which is.
I'm going to let you talk about it.
So one of the ideas that the strategic planning committee came up with was to do a STAR of the Month program. So if anyone in their department sees somebody who was, you doing one of the four qualities, they can nominate them, fill out a form, and then submit them, and then we would have, um, we'd pick one each month. We talked about even having it be like a special parking spot for that person for the month and kind of really incentivizing it. We would have smaller giveaways, like a lunch pail or a noteback or something like that, but we thought that the, um, parking spot may really intrigue some people. Um, so we're still working on it, we're not ready to roll it out immediately, but we did have the forms, and we were going to put them on the table so you guys could explain the whole program and to the employees as well, try to get them excited about it.
One of the things I think that is important for the employees to understand and everyone to understand is we move forward, one of the things that we, we talked about in our capital improvement plan was that when we, when we purchase equipment now, when we hire employees, it goes back and supports the STAR initiative. So it's either got to be an increase in our service, make us more transparent, hold us accountable, or make us more responsive. And those are what the recommendations are moving forward, is that we're using STAR to actually inform and in, and impact all future purchases. So it's important that people understand what it is, how they start implementing it in their departments, how we all work together into the future to make sure that, that we're using this basis. We spent the last eighteen months developing this program, and it's, it's a marketing tool. It, you just saw, um, all of the marketing come out where you're using STAR on your signature now. So as we present ourselves to the community, we are one Valley County voice from the way that we appear to them in the public, the way that we communicate with them. So it, it actually drives pretty much everything that we do moving forward.
We put the new positions, I have to go up here. We, we asked, um, all of the directors and elected officials that were asking for a new position to explain how it was going to provide better service, provide more transparency, provide more accountability, and provide more responsiveness by adding that position. So we asked each one of them to fill that out. So, um, it really is something that we're trying to start integrating into things.
Does that include the road department, too, Pat?
Yep, it did include the road department.
And in all of the CIP program where we went out and identified their pieces of equipment that they wanted to purchase, we actually asked, how does this increase service? How does this increase your accountability to the public? So they actually had to, to state that before they were approved through the CIP.
Mm-hmm.
And a lot of our, our ratings on the CIP actually speak back again to STAR. So it, the way that we rate projects actually are defined by STAR. So it's a holistic approach as we move forward.
Guiding principle.
Yeah.
STAR guiding principles guides us forward. So it's kind of like that North STAR.
Mm-hmm. Well, and I think that's the important thing, is that we're all pulling on the same rope.
Yep, 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 yep.
Um, is there anything else you guys need up with tomorrow at the barbecue?
Really pretty simple.
Who, who decided their cooking?
Skip and I decided, now we can take turns, because we both offer, so. We have to have two barbecues, we can each have a barbecue.
And it's from noon to one, I take it?
Oh, no, mm-hmm, twelve to two.
Twelve to two, okay.
We figured employees will have to come in shifts, you know, they can't all go at one time.
All right, anything else?
Not from me.
If you'd sent us those cheat sheets, that'd be great. I was just looking for them and I don't see them, so.
It should be in the teams, they're not in.
Oh, I don't have teams open.
That's okay, I'll, I'll email them to you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is an action item, this is a selection of the advisory committee to review the option of implementation of impact fees. I thought this was more of figuring out what the impact fees are going to be.
You can't do that until you have an advisory committee.
My, this says implementation.
Well, this is the selection.
Yeah.
Committee.
Kind of the wrong word there.
Is Ann going to be on the phone with us, Doug?
No. I'm, I'm just looking, and I don't see that we have a, a teams invite for her with the last time that she, uh, she presented, or we received, the commissioners received a presentation from her, we set this date. Um, so commissioners, I apologize, I don't know if she was going to participate.
Last I remember, Doug, is she said if we could get the names and the phone numbers, she would get together with them and put it, put it in process. So I am still waiting for, um, Dwight Jividen. He said he would think about it, I've called him a couple of times the last few days, he's not answering. I don't know if he's on there yet or not.
He's not calling.
Deleted your phone.
Hmm?
He's deleted your phone number.
He's deleted me, he's not answering.
I have confirmation, Kelly Miller, Sasha Childs, Michelle Basie. I would love to have Gary on there, is that voice on the other side of the conversation, but.
What's the reason? That's the reason why?
I just, just for balance, just so that we have full conversation about this, because I know that, you know, you have some great input. Kirby didn't have time to do it, but, I'm sorry, Michelle Basie, Sasha Childs, and Kelly Miller. So we have to have two developers, Sasha's functioning as a developer these days, so, um, and then Kelly is an agent, but if we already have too many agents, she said she would just do it as a, you know, in general. Michelle Basie's definitely an agent.
Gary, can I address the commissioners?
Sure.
I thought when we had our meeting, you and I and Ann Westcroft, I had convinced you of how bogus her last report was. And I wrote a letter in February of this year asking you commissioners to look at that, and whether you did or not, um, it wasn't even close. And why are we doing this again? The commissioners at that time, and there's, I just checked with Cindy, she has all that information, voted against impact fees because they don't pay for our problems, our housing problems, our roads, all of it, none of this solves. Our existing problems, impact fees will not help it. You can only use impact fees related to the impact that that new development does. That last report showed thirty-two percent increase in population, the population was two point four. I went to the fire departments and asked what their capital improvements were over that timeframe. She was twelve hundred percent wrong, twelve times wrong in her projections. Nothing in that two thousand seven to sixteen report was valid. So are we going to take this report and just assume, or do all of us again have to do all this work, the board of realtors and all these people, to come before you again and show you that this, this report is pie in the sky? I don't know, I haven't seen it, but I've studied the last one in depth. Um, if you're worried about affordable housing in Valley County, this makes the problem worse. Unless you do affordable housing with government funding, impact fees aren't charged, but they're charged to everybody else. Now, the guy coming in with a pocket full of money, he'll pay his impact fees and build his million-dollar house, but what about the local people? You build a garage, you do an addition, you do anything, and these fees in two thousand eight was estimated at five thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars for just the Valley, for McCall Fire and the Sheriff Department. We don't take any other things, are we going to put the road department or even water and sewer, we're going to put all these impact fees? Because typically they're ten to fifteen thousand dollars added to a building permit. The new guy, he'll pay it. What about us? It just kills any affordable housing up here to add those type of fees to it. So I don't know, before this goes any farther and we get into the mess we got into the last time, would you look at it a little closer and see, or are you just mandated, impact fees are going to provide this money that we can spend, which it won't solve any of our, any of our problems that we have today?
Gary, when was that done, two thousand seven?
Two thousand eight, when she actually did the report, and I took the ten-year period she gave in that report, and I went to the fire departments and wanted to know their capital improvements, I looked at the growth of Valley County, all of that stuff, and it wasn't even close. Wasn't even close. And then the last time, what's the problem with this advisory board is you've got two developers, and they're the ones paying it, they're outvoted by the three others that you select to be on there, and recipients weren't supposed to be, of the money weren't supposed to be on that last advisory board, and the fire chief and Dolly was on it. So it, the thing was flawed from the beginning to the end, Ann was supposed to look at alternative sources of money in this study, just not impact fees. She didn't do that. She just did her impact fee study, collected money, and went. I just, this just smells. Because we got this report from before, we can analyze how correct she was, and she wasn't. So is this the same thing?
And from my perspective, I had no idea we had done this before. This is the first I'd heard of a impact fee study in oh eight.
Wow. Oh, it was, it was nasty.
The only thing I remember was all the CIPs for the road department.
Board of Realtors got into it, and that was, I believe, before Ray Moore was a commissioner, I think he ran the board, but I can get that information for you, but they did a ton of studies and presentations before the commissioners. And then the commissioners determined that it was a detriment, not an addition to Valley County, to impose impact fees. And the growth did pay for itself because we got the CUP process. If there's a substation needed because of new growth, you put that on the conditions of approval for that area. We have a vehicle to take care of growth, and that's the conditions of approval of projects. Uh, this just blanketly hits everybody, so.
Look, Gary, this is, so no decisions have been made about impact fees. This is the research that would be required for us to make that decision. I know you have concerns with Ann, as do I, and I've approached that with her. You and I have both talked with her. That last time, her, her numbers were way off. We also had a recession like we've never had before. But, you know, I do know that she needs to tighten that. So, and, and the reason for this committee is to look at all of it and see if it even makes sense. I don't know that it makes sense either. Um, one of the things that I was told is for local housing, the county could pay, you, you have to charge everybody, but the county can actually pay for that fee if it is considered local housing. So there'd have to be some strong parameters around it. My greater concern, and I approached this with Doug, is that these funds have to be extremely, um, exclusive. If you collect fees for the road department, they, any, every single amount of those fees have to be spent in the road department, cannot be muddied, it cannot be spent on the sheriff or the parks, I mean, it has to be very specific and in its own bucket. I still have some concerns with looking at numbers and looking at what was projected last time. And when we started this project, I called Ann out and said, you know, we'll, if we have a thousand building permits a year, and you're telling me we're going to make five million dollars, how much are you going to charge per permit? I mean, that's like a fifty thousand dollar, you know, fee. The numbers were way off. And the, the next step on this is really to determine what's correct, what's not correct, and does it make sense? The only thing I will rebut you on is growth does pay for itself down the road, it doesn't pay for it right up front. You've got to structure that really carefully, um, because if you need a new road built or, you know, whatever needs to go in, usually you can recoup your funds within seven to ten years.
Eight years, you have to spend.
So it's right up front that these costs hit the county, and we have to figure out how to pay for that until growth does pay for itself and it comes back at the end of the day. But my concern, and it has been all along, is that the county is ready to, first of all, we just passed STAR. I mean, we have to be transparent and held very accountable for these funds. It, it's a little bit different for the fire department because you have one focus there. I mean, when we talked about doing this, it was for park and rack, roads, sheriff, I think that was the three.
Mm-hmm.
But they cannot co-mingle funds at all. And so it's, it's imperative that the county is ready for this. So is that going to cost us another position just to do this? If it does, you've negated acquiring those funds. And these funds have to be spent within the eight years of collection. So if we have a huge project, and Gary's right, I mean, these funds, um, can't be used to maintain anything. So if we, in the, in the road department, the only thing it would be able to do is to buy a new piece of equipment, um, to maintain future roads. It's all about future impact. You can't go backwards.
Sure, you couldn't replace a piece of equipment. You
You could buy, it's kind of like McCall wants to do a second story in the fire department. And it creates better living conditions, separates some gals from the guys, all of that. You can't do it with impact fees. Because it doesn't add any new positions and it doesn't add any apparatus, additional apparatus storage. That's out. There was a, they thought they could do it. Impact fees don't. And if you look at this, the studies of municipalities being sued for wrongly using this money, that's rampant. And are we opening ourselves up to that? As a developer, and we don't have many of them, they create land and sell them, but build homes. They'll be after you if those funds aren't positioned right. And it's really limited what you can use that money for. It can only benefit the, the growth that was, they took the money in. It has to be used specifically for that, like a new substation. But I'll argue that it's like Tamarack. Conditions of approval created a substation there. So we have a vehicle to do that. So I just don't know how you don't co-mingle and how you don't get sued over this thing.
However, like the condition of approval of Tamarack, it only provides the building. You still have to provide everybody inside of it as well as all of the equipment for that building. So it's how do we pay for that? So, and, and that's, you know, I'm not a hundred percent on board. You and I have discussed that. I just want to give, I just want all of the information, you know, before we make a decision. Our contract with her didn't really give us an opt-out. I mean, we talked about that how many months ago?
We could opt out and stop paying her, I guess. Tell her we're done, but. And my concern honestly with the impact fees is the fact that, just like you brought up in the very beginning, Gary, is we're going to force more of the lower income local folks out because they won't be able to afford to add the garage or, you know, build another house because of the impact fees. Then you get into the rub of, like, Tamarack is going to build all this employee housing next year and put in a site for a fire station. Do you still charge them impact fees? Because they're going to provide that for you. I don't know.
You'd have to. You'd have to. I just, Elda, I just feel we're losing our identity up here. We go with all this stuff. We're not Valley County anymore. I think we have a good system and I think it works. We just got a lot of people coming in here and I don't know that we want to start changing it so much.
We kind of made a big change today by the moratorium on the twenty acre splits for right now until we can get our grasp around that whole issue. But I've always felt like we are doing a pretty good job, especially with the roads. And the developers had to put the roads and they had to put the power in and the phone. And, and now we're requiring fiber optics. And so a lot of those expenses are on the developers' back and not ours. Where we're running into the issue is from the development out to this county road. There's a, there's a chunk in there that we seem to be missing out on. It's kind of like the last mile of broadband. We've got good structure here and good structure here, but nothing in between. And so we've talked about, okay, if you're going to do a subdivision off this county road, you've got to pave out to the county road with that. So many lots and so much impact. That it can't just be a gravel road anymore. And then you look at the other side of it, and that's my issue, is the fact that it's a lot cheaper to maintain a gravel road than it is a paved road.
Right.
For Valley County and up here with the snow and the ice and the frost and the heaving. And sometimes you think maybe it's not such a great idea to have a paved road. It's nice in the summertime when it's dusty, but in the rest of the time, it's pretty hard to maintain that road. I don't know, this was something that I feel like I want to see what the results were. Because if she came in and said, it's going to be, let's just say, ten thousand dollars a lot for impact fees, that's no way, that's not going to fly with me. Because now we've eliminated all of our, our service people, all the people that work here and live here, they're not going to be able to ever do anything. And we've changed that. We pushed more folks out. It's like adding another levy on for, for whatever reason. Well, that's just more taxes on our locals that can't, barely afford to live here now.
Again, though, I'd like to research how we can mitigate that for locals. Because those guys that are moving here and building these five million dollar homes, ten thousand dollars to them is nothing. It's how, how do we try and capitalize on growth? And it's not, I, I don't know that that's the right term. But how do we try and pay for some of this that's coming at us while still protecting our local boundaries? And Gary, I understand the sentiment that, you know, Valley County is a beautiful place. We are changing. And we have to look holistically at how can we at least manage some of that growth? And I, I mean, I agree with you. Nobody wants change, but we're changing. And we've got to look at all avenues as far as, you know, how we pay for that. I don't want to go to the taxpayer's pocket every time.
Well, Tamarack was going to change everything. And in the seventies, all the condo building up here was going to change everything. In a tourist town, you always have these highs. And I've grafted, and you have these lows and these peaks. Because when the general economy falters, the first thing people get rid of is their, their dreams, their property, their second homes and all that. And we get hit harder than, say, Boise does. And that's going to continue. To say we're changing, we're in one of those peaks right now. That doesn't mean we're going to stay there. It'll probably falter again and we'll be back where we were and everything will be normal again. It's done it four times in the, since I've been here since the seventies. So this isn't the new norm. This is just one of our peaks and everybody gets upset about it and thinks things are going crazy. And, you know, half the good people move out of here and, and we're down to a half and then a quarter and then a third. But.
Gary, you're feeling like you don't want to continue on with the whole impact study altogether?
I'm sorry, El?
You don't want to continue on with any of the impact study altogether? Is that your feeling?
No, because we've been there before. We've done this. Nothing changed. We were, you know, at a peak, two thousand seven, we had the collapse. But during this whole thing, we were afraid, we needed to get, people were coming in here in droves. We had to get these impact fees. And then, kaput. What we're left with is we're all going to have five years from now when we're back to normal, we're all going to have impact fees on our, personally on us. And nobody's coming in and developing. Because it died. I mean, there was an estimated one billion dollars lost up here in Valley County after two thousand seven. And I talked to a lot of those guys because I was buying property at depressed prices. And people lost millions up here because they thought it was going to continue. It won't. So I just don't think we should go down this road again because you're going to get everybody fighting it again. And I don't know why we have to follow the mandate of five on this committee. Why can't you just form an advisory committee of Valley County citizens and discuss it?
Sure.
That's, that's what I thought we were discussing today is. So, you know, I, I wasn't aware that we were making a decision on whether or not we were going to vote yes or no on the impact fees. What I thought we were doing is forming that board and trying to come up with some folks that could do the review for us as we're moving forward.
And, and that's the stage we're at? I mean, there's no discussion as far as moving forward or anything else. It's still, you know, it's still a research project.
But your goal to impact fees is do the study, then select this five-member board with only two developers on it. And that's, you're moving forward to impact fees.
No.
Why don't you stop and just have a group discuss this?
And that's where we're at. That's right now, that this is, the next stage is the discussion. And the only reason I said five is that's the minimum per state law. You can have as many people on there as you want.
Do they have to be developers or realtors?
You have to have certain people on there. There has to be two realtors, two developers.
Two developers.
Maybe, maybe at six, because I think you have to have two from the general public also. Or maybe one from the general public. Yeah, you have to fill very specific positions, but then you can open it up. And that's, I'm just looking for the research, you know? What, what can we gain?
Go back to what Sherry said earlier. I think you'd be a great person for that group, Gary. You know, I, I read your email when you sent it to us. And I don't know all these details. I certainly don't remember talking about impact fees in two thousand eight. I was here as well. But I think, you know, to me, like, that's the perspective that we want. We want somebody who's going to be that, you know, critical voice that says, do we want this? This is just, you know, part of it is just looking at whether or not we're even talking, talking about doing it at this point.
Well, I can sure give you the reasons why not. I'd love to hear the, the reasons for it.
Sure. And I was going to say, I just think your perspective would be a great one to add to this group that we're talking about. Because it is a review at this point.
A lot of people come to us all the time and say, you need to get the new people to pay for all this. I hear that a lot ever since I've been a commissioner. Those people should be fixing or those people should be putting in the broadband and giving some money to the fire department. And it's like, how do you do that? This is the only way you can do it. However, without me saying that, I've never really been in favor of it from the beginning because I thought our conditional use permit process was going to catch those guys and make them build that infrastructure when they're developing. But we have so many single lot splits that don't do anything.
Right.
That we're not, we're, we're not collecting any funds or they're not required to put in the road or whatever. And so a lot of that's going on too. So I can see both sides of the argument.
Three of the folks that I talked to about joining this group, all of them had reservations. They said, hey, I'm not sure how I feel about impact fees. And I think, like I said, I think that's the discussion that we're getting ready to have.
My feeling is if all five or six came back and said, we don't want impact fees, we're done. That's the way I feel.
Yeah, and it can be a personal choice depending on what occupation you're in or what you're doing. I derive my stuff from her last report and the facts. I know the Board of Realtors were heavily involved in opposition against this. And I do have access to all that information as well.
I know that, so the realtors have softened a bit in their opposition to this. This is happening all over. Legislature is actually looking at impact fees this year. So this is a conversation at the top, at the state, on how, how we can help mitigate property taxes. Because all of these things that have to be done, we have to go right to the property taxes to get them instead of charging those that are joining us from outside. So there's a greater conversation other than just Valley County about this this year. And that's why doing our research, I think, is important. So we have up or down. You know, what is the, and, and I think holding Ann accountable to her past mistakes is important, Gary. And, you know, she knows that. I mean, she knows how you feel, she knows how I feel. And we, we have to do it right if we're going to do it. And that's important. The fire districts are looking at it. They may find at the end of the day that they don't have enough money to move forward on it either. But that's not a way to fund their future.
Well, and I think there's only two fire departments that are involved. I don't think Donnelly is involved in this.
No, they're not.
No, they're not.
So they've already kind of made up their mind that this is not the way they want to go. That's what that tells me. But like I said earlier, if all five or six people came back and said, we don't want to do impact fees.
You know, if impact fees would solve our problems, I'd be for them in a second. If the report is accurate, rather than these sky-high projections, I could be for it. But neither of those are true at this point. I haven't seen this new report, but I'll sure tear it apart like I did the last one.
There is no new report. That's the, that's misnomer. This group is going to be formulating that new report. So that new.
Nobody analyzes her report?
That's what this new group's going to be doing. So that's why you'd be so critical. You're so good at research. And the others on it are good at, at too. But she will be informing this group. They pull it apart, they look at it, and before it comes to us at all. So that's the whole premise of this board.
All right, well, I appreciate you listening to me.
Are we adding your name to the board?
He nodded, I saw that.
I saw him nod.
Verbal, it caught, caught him on camera.
So where do you want to go from there?
Well, I, I think we have to complete what we started, you know, doing the research, seeing what that means, looking at all of it. But certainly, you know, putting this out into the community and getting the community's feedback on it. The feedback I've gotten is I want people to pay when they move here. You know, I don't want to pay for this stuff out of my property taxes. I want the newbies to come. Well, what does that look like? That plan has to be formulated. That plan has to be identified. And, you know, it's got to make sense. And I share Gary's concern about putting additional costs on housing. And I asked Ann specifically about that. And she did state that the, the county can formulate a formula to help mitigate those impacts and, and take care of the local housing issue. I don't know what it means on, on garages and that kind of stuff. I don't know enough yet.
If, the way that I understand it is that an impact fee is, is based on the size of a development and, and the amount of impact that that development is going to have, whether that development is five condos or a brand-new five million dollar home. It's the impact that's associated with that. So, I mean, is that a sliding scale? I just, I don't know. Or is that just a flat fee that you charge to everybody?
I think it's a flat fee that charges to everybody. That's my understanding. That's, I don't know enough about it yet.
So if you have a five million dollar home versus a two hundred thousand dollar home, they're both paying the same impact fees. That does not seem rational at all to me.
I don't think that's the way that they're designed to, to work. I don't.
Do you know, Steve? Have you guys been explained that yet?
Well, if you look at that last study that Gary referred to, it, it broke it down into square foot. You pay a certain amount per square foot.
Got it.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah.
More sliding scale.
Yeah. For developed and, and undeveloped property. So that's how it would be figured.
And if you find a two hundred thousand dollar house, please let me know.
Or if you can build it.
Anymore, even a five hundred thousand dollar.
Even if a guy buys a manufactured home and moves it on a lot, do they pay impact fees? Sure. Cindy, do you have anything you want to add? I can tell the wheels are turning back there.
Hand the microphone.
Steve didn't have to.
I haven't looked at that in, in a long time. But it seems like residential uses paid a flat fee and multifamily, commercial, industrial did it based upon square footage. It is kind of, I think it worked last time. But I haven't looked at it in a number of years.
So how about somebody that has a ten-lot subdivision?
It doesn't come in until you have your building permit. The building permit that kicks that in. So it's not the developer paying for it, it's the person trying to build a house.
So you could have a ten-lot subdivision have all the impact and not have a house for five years because we slumped and no impact fees coming in?
True. And then you only have three years left to acquire those fees.
No, no, it's, it would be eight years from the time that that impact fee was paid by the contractor, the builder.
And I think what happened last time was the county, instead of doing impact fees, then went to the development agreements.
Well, we were doing development agreements already for roads.
You were at the same time that the impact fee study was done?
Yes. Because we didn't do roads and I haven't, this is just my recollection, I have not looked at it. I don't believe we did roads at that time because there weren't any property taxes that went into the development of that road system.
Normally, the developer paid all the dirt costs.
They built it.
They built the subdivision.
Yes.
So there was really not much cost to the county. Where the impact, I think, came in was all of a sudden, we don't have enough fire stations. We don't have enough help at the fire stations because we couldn't figure out a way to fund that. The same thing with the sheriff's department.
Yeah, I think we did the, the fire, sheriff. Fire and sheriff were the, the big deals last time. I don't know, Steve, were you part of that?
Cascade was not involved in it last time.
Yeah, they weren't. One, I've got a figure here for you. The, an impact fee for fire and EMS and sheriff department in two thousand eight totaled five thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars per residence. And that's not the road department, that's not waters or whatever you're going to put impact fees.
Not building housing, not any of that.
Was that based upon each residential unit?
Yeah. What it was is you took her figures and you timed it, as he said, and then averaged the square footage of a house. And this came up to five thousand five three. It was in a report.
Yeah, it was part of the report that, that came up with that figure. But it was a, I believe it was a flat fee for each unit.
And Gary, you were talking about litigation. Isn't there a lot of litigation on impact fees? And maybe, okay, you probably know too, I don't know. But it seems like almost every week in your paper, you're reading about some kind of a lawsuit against the city or a county that.
What I found were class actions. Where a subdivision, a lot of different people built, didn't use the fees, and they all grouped together and sued to get the fees back. Sometimes they didn't have the money. It was used someplace else, but not used specific to their development. I did find quite a bit of that on the internet.
I think Cootten County is fighting one right now. Right?
Well, the other thing that keeps going through my mind, and it's been that way ever since I've been a commissioner, we have a lot of acres out here yet. we have a lot of acres out here yet before we're gonna be full, I guess you might say. I mean, there's a lot of ground in Valley County that we didn't have roads to it yet. So I don't know why we're starting to worry about growth coming in, or too much growth. We have such a huge base of acreages that we can still develop them. Maybe we're just too, we're premature on this. I don't know.
I don't know if we're premature, but I mean, it's something that we have to look at. I, I tend to think that we're not gonna see a large downturn. And I think that the trajectory has been set, that it's not, personally, I mean, it's just my perception, but I don't think we're gonna see the same kinda downturns that we've seen in the past here.
I'm concerned with Brundage expanding. I mean, they're gonna be a full-on Tamarack. Um, they've got plans for a five-year build-out to look just like Tamarack or Brundage. You get the mine going, you know, there's gonna be a lot of impacts to this area. I just don't wanna continue to go to the taxpayer base for everything if we don't have to. But I also don't know what that looks like yet. I just don't think it's been defined for us yet.
The, the alternative to the impact fee, of course, is the development agreement. That's the 676511A, that you can do with the, the developer of the subdivision on their projected impacts. And that's based upon a rezone. And that's what we did with, um, Tamarack, was the development agreement capital contribution agreement.
Did you rezone Tamarack?
No, but as part of the PUD, we did, we did that, the planned unit development. And then we were doing development agreements with the other subdivision developers. Um, that's the one that was taken to court, so we rescinded that resolution that required people to participate in that. That's the capital improvement overlay. But it was never actually found that we were doing it illegally, we just stepped out of that. Um, I don't think any of the findings of any of the development agreement lawsuits found that we were doing it wrong.
It was just the whole concept in the beginning that, we have the right to do a development agreement.
It was that whole era where everybody was taking everybody to courts. You know, like the city of McCall, Blaine County, they were all involved in lawsuits. Um, that included the inclusionary housing, one that we backed out of also, because that was right after the downturn, so we just stopped.
Well, call lost, remember, and then now the county did not wanna go through the same thing, so they gave it up.
They said it was an illegal tax, and housing, those kinds of things are a community issue, and we shouldn't be taxing people. So, I think is how all that went. So I, I think with our, our new program, with, you know, instituting some zoning type of overlays, that type of thing, um, we could probably get back into some, some of the development agreement. But I haven't even had really a chance to talk with Oki about any of that.
So Cindy, let's say, Anne comes back and comes up with a, a figure of 5,000 residents. We can't even lower that, can we? By law? I mean, we can't say, no, we're only gonna charge 2,000, because we have nothing to base that. Does that make sense?
Well, if you do the impact fee study, and then you implement that ordinance to adopt these impact fees, then you have to treat everybody according to that ordinance. Unless you have some exceptions for, like, community housing.
Well, and I'm assuming that would be deed-restricted properties, we'd probably not have to pay the impact fee.
But you would have to write that into your ordinance.
But I can't say, she says it should be 5,000, how about we just say 2,000? No, the law doesn't give you that ability to lower it.
No, it would be, you would set it by ordinance, or you would, you would adopt an ordinance setting these impact fees with exceptions, and then do the resolution, I believe, by-
We can set it for any amount we want. Whatever's out there is just a recommendation. I mean, if Anne recommends we do $15,000, we can say, no, we're gonna do 2,500.
Yes.
And we set that by ordinance, and everybody has to pay the same amount.
Well, it's based on her projections in her impact fee study.
Right.
That will dictate what you, there's a formula she uses, and that's where we got to over 5,000.
Doug, you just sent us the CIP improvement plan, is this from Anne?
Yes, I just received that, uh, yesterday.
So she's projecting $6.2 million of capital improvement plans over the next eight years, that this stuff could be used for. I don't remember how many permits we issue a year.
Uh-huh, around 300, 320, maybe.
But that, not all of those are residential units.
No.
That's-
I think last year it was 198 residential units.
That seems kinda high, but I'm not sure, I cannot-
It could be, it could be, I-
Even if you do 100.
So if you, if you had 100, and you need to spend $6 million in eight years, that's quite a bit of impact fee for 100 houses.
That's what I'm questioning of the volume is there. That was, that was a question I think that we had before, is what was the volume?
Have to look.
Cindy, I know this may sound like a dumb question, but are we going at this wrong with the subdivision? Should it be a planned unit development instead of a subdivision, where we can get more out of these, some, some of these developers?
Well, a planned unit development is just a new concept for, uh, it's a comprehensive plan for a planned type of community, with various types of uses within it, under one ownership or, um-
So the fees aren't any different for a PUD versus a CUP?
No. No, if Tamarack came in with a house and you had adopted impact fees, that house would pay the same impact fees. Unless, as part of your, and I'm just surmising things here.
Mm-huh.
Unless in their development agreement, or their capital contribution agreement, it, you know, they prepaid that stuff.
What I mean about the CIPs when we were doing the roads is that we had an agreement with that developer. They agreed to it, we agreed to it, and yet it still got challenged in court. I mean, to me, if I make an agreement with you and your subdivision, we get along just fine. How, how can that get thrown out? But it did.
Well, that was because the funds were becoming commingled, and those road developments agreements stated if Gary is gonna do some work in this area, around Lake Fork or wherever it is. And the county is going to take whatever funds he pays and improve roadwork around that area. That's all those CIPs. That didn't happen. Those monies were going into a central pot, being spent other areas. So we didn't live up to our end of that agreement. And that's where we got in trouble.
I don't know that any of them are overturned. Did we actually lose some of those?
We refunded some of those.
I think that was just a, I would have to look. I can't sit here with any authority whatsoever. I, the only one that I'm aware of is the Clover Valley.
So, Oki, got any advice?
Good afternoon.
That was luck.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You know, as I'm sitting here listening to the conversation, what really is, come to mind is, is 95% of what you have in front of you, and what you will be proceeding forward, is, is a matter of policy. These are difficult political decisions that, that you'll have to make uh, in, in regards to, um, what's in the best interest of the county and, and its future. The, the 5% part of that is legal, and so that's where I, that's where I come in. And I think I, you know, if I was to give you some advice at this stage in the game is, impact fees, um, you, you know, the authority for the county to impose an impact fee is statutory. In fact, it has its very own chapter. And, and so, I think it's critically important for you to know what that law requires of the county. Read it, review it, if you have questions, uh, come to me, and I'll, I'll do the research necessary to resolve those questions. But as you proceed, whether you decide to impose impact fees or not impose impact fees, know the law and follow it. And, uh, you know, the same is true with development agreements. Those authorities reside in the statute, so refer to that. And if there's any questions or concerns about how to interpret or implement that, or how that's going to apply to Valley County, that's where I, that's where I can help. But, uh, but, but keep in mind, a lot of the confusion comes from whether or not, you know, as a matter of policy, this is the right direction to go. You know, that, you know, those are, those are the areas where, where you're the experts. But, you know, so long as you, as you're following the statute, and we're talking, we're here today to talk about the advisory committee. And the statute says, if the county is even contemplating, uh, impact fees, an advisory committee needs to be put, uh, you know, needs to be assembled. And, and, and it's, it certainly is within the scope of the law for you to even present that as question number one, and we don't go to question number two, unless they answer in the affirmative, let's go to that next level. So, the advisory committee can serve as a tool that can help give you some informed and, and, and really a broad perspective as to whether or not, as a matter of policy, this is the direction that you wanna go. But, but it does require that. If you're contemplating it, you have to have an advisory committee in place. And so, you know, keep that in mind, that, uh, the, the law requires that. So before you proceed any further, uh, you, you need to, you need to make a decision on this advisory committee, and, and whether you impannal it. There was some discussion earlier on about, uh, the makeup of that. Commissioner Maupin, you're correct in stating that the, the, the five-member commission, or, or the advisory committee, is the minimum. That you don't have to be limited to five, you just have to have at least five with the, uh, with the background and expertise of the statute. But there's nothing, nothing that says that you can't appoint nine, or 10, or, or, you know, a, a broader cross-section to, to better inform the county commissioners, so. I guess unless you have any questions, that's, that's all I have on this topic.
So is it safe to say then, Brian, that if we can't form the committee, then this isn't gonna go any further?
Yeah, you, uh, uh, an advisory committee is, is a requirement of, of the impact fee. And I think, uh, Cindy walked you through some of the, some of the other requirements as well. You've gotta, you've gotta basically codify a schedule, uh, any fee schedules that you may arrive at. This, we're talking way down the road, uh, in an ordinance. And so, there's many, many steps, but the advisory committee, the formation of advisory committee is step one.
Well, and right now, we only have four names.
There are two more folks that I, I need to-
Me too.
Have a conversation with.
Yeah, me too. So I'm thinking maybe what we ought to do is table this for another, a week or two, and give us some more time to see if we can find some other people to fill it out, to make sure it's gonna work. We gotta be legal before we can even start. And, and Gary, I wanna ask you straight up front, are you willing to serve on this committee or not? Because we didn't get a, a real solid answer. If not, we'll-
Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll do it, I don't want to, but I will. Yeah, but understand too, there's really two committees, because once you impose impact fees, there is an advisory committee that constantly talks to you guys and ensures that the money is being-
Spent right.
Reviewed and modified. So it's another layer, this, this advisory board won't go away. So maybe we have an advisory board that's more than five to start with, whoever wants, and hone it down if you do accept impact fees, to this five-member, I don't know. Or six, I'd like to see at least six, we got six developers and six other people on it.
Actually, I'd like to see a lot more than five or six. I'd like to see some just regular old people on there.
Well, we can, and that's, you know, that's when it gets the public hearings. You've gotta have multiple public hearings on this too, before any decision is made after the advisory boards. This is just looking at it holistically to even see, I mean, if we only make, you know, $100,000 a year, and we're, does that make sense for Valley County? Is that even a good funding structure? I don't know. Because it has to be used so specifically in what you're doing. So this is just, it's just a further way to inform with a lot more information than what we currently have.
Senator, my feeling right now is that I think we're too soon. Because we have so many hundreds of thousands of acres out here that hasn't even been looked at or developed, or could be developed. I mean, if DF comes in and starts hooking off, then, you know, we're, we're still a pretty small county. 11, 12,000 people, I just think it's a little too soon yet for impact fees, but-
If you look at the percentages, we're federal and state, we're 92%, 4% is ag, we've got 4% to develop.
No, you need to look at the acres. And, you know, we figured one time that, what was it, Cindy, 47% of the valley was in a floodplain, too wet.
A lot of the, I'd say half of the valley floor is developed because of floodplain. I groundwater.
I groundwater.
I can go either way. I brought this up when Gary and I talked before, and said, do we wanna just stop now? And you guys wanted to move forward, and I'm happy to move forward. I, I like to be fully informed before I make a decision, one way or another.
I agree, I think that's the reason that we were talking about putting that together. I'd be in favor of tabling it, and looking for some more folks to, that would be interested in helping out with that project.
Okay, so then I think that's what we'll do, Doug, and we'll just stay in contact with you when we think we can get this on the next agenda. I wanna keep talking to some folks down here, I did talk to some other Realtors that were like, kinda like Gary, not that I know, but hell know. And were pretty strong against it, and didn't wanna serve on the committee, but we're opposed, but-
So there is some movement with that. And I would recommend you guys look at what the state's looking at this year too legislatively. Because there is some stuff moving in the legislature this year too, so.
As far as impact fees?
Yeah.
Well, we've got about 13 more minutes, add your two cents worth.
Actually, can go into an executive session earlier if you want, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Gary, for coming in, I appreciate you coming in. It's a tough decision. It's just funding sources, looking for funding sources, what does that look like? Did you see, you got here a little bit later, but we put 747,000 into the road department budget this year. Starting that.
Presentation there next month. Just, I don't know why I do these, it just consumes me, it takes so much of my time. Like this advisor, I'll sit on it, but if you do the impacts, I don't wanna be on that board, but I'll be on this advisor.
And, you know, if you think somebody else would, Brandon would wanna do it? I'm sure you've talked to him a lot, maybe one of your family members would like to engage in the conversation, I don't know.
So in tune to the community, I get a lot of phone calls. That's from the past, you know, the overlays in the airport, and all those things.
Yeah, the airport overlays, a whole nother conversation as we move forward.
There were some great battles though, you had to admit, they were, there were some great battles where the people get involved. That's what I like about the CUP process. You get your neighbors there.
That's what I liked about it too, and those guys that put that together in the 70s were pretty smart about, you know, if the neighbors don't like what you're doing, you can do some conditions of approval, and, and you can do that, then it'll work for everybody, and the neighbors got a chance to spit.
You got your three minutes to speak, and-
Mm-huh. There's more democracy.
What I don't like about that is all the neighbors think that they can just say, no, you can't develop your property. And you can't do that either. There's property right issues that, you can put some parameters around it, but you can't just come and say no.
I remember one, when I was doing the subdivision, a lady stated that I was gonna drive dump trucks up and down Pleasant Acres Road. And her kids play on that road, and it should be denied. And in those days, I played a little more of a smartass, I got up, I said, isn't the bigger problem that our kids are playing on a county road? And they hope you appreciated that, and I learned not to be that person, you know? There were some, uh, did they have the right to say it?
Really say it with age comes wisdom?
Age comes wisdom, I don't know. I always call it the thinning of the herd. Kids are gonna play on the road, that's not a good place to play, you know, it's like... I don't know, this is, uh, impact fees can really affect, and to me, to, we're not a rich enough area for impact fees yet. Really, the way I look at it, but, and I think our system works pretty well, funding most of this stuff. Sure, we have to have more property taxes for fire, and we have to have more for sheriffs, and some of the impacts we have in the courthouse, but it's really a small amount versus impact fees that would bring- but it's really a small amount versus impact fees that would bring in...
That's our character, you know? I don't know. We do without a lot up here. We have to drive a long ways to get a lot, or we're going to pay a lot for what we get.
Yeah.
But we chose that. I just don't want to see us become, you know, one city after another that all blend together like Boise. Do we have to address growth? Or can we just say we're full?
Well, I tell people all the time, if you don't like what he's doing, buy the ground.
You can't just tell somebody you can't do something with your property, though. I mean, that's, to me, that's a property right. If I own property, you can't just tell me, sorry, you can't develop it. We want it to be open space. You better pay me for that privilege.
You can, but if you put the impacts of that development is going to have, and you put those on him, then he has a real decision.
Right.
Do I want to spend the money to develop it, or am I just going to split the lots and make quick cash and leave? So, to me, like, the 20-acre moratorium's a smart thing to do right now. Some other things should be done. You just kind of slow it down.
What else do you think we should do?
Give that some thought.
Give us some thought and let me know, will you?
I ask everybody I talk to, what's your input?
Enough to think about.
Now you know how we suffer every day, Gary.
I respect you, but I don't envy you.
20 different topics every day.
It's the one that cracks me up every time, is that we've got ours, now we need to go down and shut the gate. And it's like, you can't, you can't do that. You just can't do that. You know, we need to stop now after we got here.
I've heard that a dozen times.
Yeah.
Don't you wish you could just put a gate, and I'd say, well, what about before you came?
Yeah.
Thanks for coming in, Gary. Hey, how are we doing?
All right, gentlemen. On another subject, you don't have any questions for me. It's this thing you're going to do in executive session, do you?
I don't even know what we're doing in an executive session. So we don't know. We don't know.
I just buried myself, so it doesn't matter.
That one's at 3:15, Mr. Swain, Gary.
You don't need me for that.
Not at this point in time, I don't think. They do have the letter, and that's, yeah.
Satisfactory.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
What is that check for?
We are almost done for today's call.
Yep.
In theory, just saying that tonight, the commissioners could be there to listen to the conversations. We just can't listen to their discussion after?
I would not recommend that.
I know, I don't think so either.
Now you advise yourself, and you will build a vote.
Right.
I don't think this is going to fly, Sherry. The impact thing.
I went after talking to Gary and Anne in January. That's why I said, are we, do we really want to go forward with this? Because I'm glad he said he would sit on the committee. Anne said, I've had a lot of people that have sat on those committees that have come in totally against them and left totally for them. So we'll see. But Gary's pretty adamant, and he will, you know...
Well, he'll influence, you know, he'll influence everybody on there.
So I...
I don't know, why Dwight won't let me know. I talked to Dave O'Brien. Nope, no one wanted to do that.
Mr. Zay, to give you guys some time, just where we're at, we put it on for October 4th. I think that'll be...
Could be plenty of time. If we can't get a committee by then, I don't think it's going to go.
Doug, did you talk to somebody about just turning the sweep of the courthouse?
Yep, we got it taken care of.
All right, perfect.
So you...
So I'll sit and let him in, and Larry's going to just make it, so if I walk up to the door, it opens and...
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion, then to go into executive session, parrot code 74261D.
I'm moved.
Second?
Moved to second by roll call.
Hang on, I...
Maupin, I.
Esbra, I. And Doug, we're in at 2:56. This is litigation. Is this oak?